And I think they had twelve different items that they have already accomplished and taken care of. Library. The library's outdoor story walk continues on the plaza with a new book through December thirty first entitled Snowman at Night by Carolyn Beuler. A virtual trivia event for teens and adults featuring library and literature will be held on Wednesday. A virtual escape the library event for children six to twelve is Saturday. And a tea time book club meets online November ninth. The fall session of the young adult virtual book club is November tenth and features the titles The Fountains of Silence by Ruta Sepetires. Other, we will be presenting two videos tonight by Creative Services Division. The first highlights some work done by the crews to make this year's cleanup week's success. And thank you for everybody in Solid Waste and Public Works team for your efforts to make this event possible. We got a good public input on that. People are very pleased with service they got. The second is an inside look on the rehab of a water tower near Ninth Avenue and Forty-Fifth Street South. This procedure extends the life of the tower and saves the taxpayer money.
This year is a little heavier than last year. We're particularly, we're picking through the metals and appliances that have Freon in them and separating it from the regular trash. The metals and Freon get sent to a scrapyard in Talon where they'll be recycled. This time of the year, we have a smaller crew than we normally would in the springtime during normal cleanup week because we still have other functions with the street department that they're currently working on. So we need the two weeks to get through the entire cleanup route. We have contractors that have been picking up just the regular trash. That helps us out a lot. It's been pretty smooth. We go through the year, we pretty much already know what areas are going to be heavy based on previous years. I've been doing this about a little over twenty years now. Back then, we would take just about anything. Now, we're trying to sift through more of the metals, even down the chicken wire, metal chairs. We'll try to get it all. The less metals you can put in the landfill, the better.
So the, the main reason for repainting or rehabilitating water towers is to protect the structure from corrosion. You know, corrosion happens naturally in the environment and with that much steel exposed to the elements, it's important to protect it so that you get a good, long life out of it. Typically, the structure of a water tower, if it's maintained properly, it can last well beyond a hundred years. Typically, the coating systems that we use, they last between twenty and thirty years. When they sandblast it, they also use grinders to remove any of the rust or the welds are starting to show some wear, they'll grind them out and repair the welds on the inside so that we get the most life. The most important part of the project is actually the prep work and grinding to make sure that the paint system can bind to the steel and that's how you get the most life out of them.
Cool. Who did the drone footage there? Was it the fire department? The drone footage? No? Yeah. Pretty good.
Greg, did the fire department do the drone? No? Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda, item three A being withdrawn?
I saw move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October nineteen, two thousand twenty regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through forty-eight excluding item three A, which has been withdrawn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who did second it? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item forty-nine Fargo Moorhead diversion project update. Joe Paulson is here, the CEO of that project. You've got some good news for the commission. Something happened last week, Joel.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much, members of the city commission. Joel Paulson, Executive Director of the Diversion Authority. Mayor said I only have five minutes to talk, do a diversion update. I think I need more time, but I'll, I'll hit the highlights anyways. So, last week, I think most of you know, on Monday, October twenty-sixth, terms of settlement agreement with all parties involved in litigation for the diversion authority was agreed to by all parties. And, and basically what that means is litigation will go away for the diversion project and the terms of the settlement agreement offer that the project meets all local ordinances. And so I'm happy to present to the commission tonight that we'll be moving forward with all permits and meeting all local, state and federal ordinances. And what this provides for us is certainty in construction. And as the commission knows, we're planning on procuring a P-three developer early in two thousand twenty-one and we'll be expecting to start construction on the channel in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. So I'm happy to let the commission know tonight that our schedule is still intact and we plan to provide permanent flood protection by the spring of two thousand twenty-eight. And I'll open for any questions. Certainly can talk about the terms if anybody has any questions as far as that's concerned.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
So Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind, Joel, just talk a little bit about the experience and then I want to make sure that John Strand gets credit because he, we were all very skeptical when he came to us and said, you know what? I'm very optimistic that we can get some kind of an agreement. And, and he did. And so I just want to make sure that he gets credit. But if you could talk about the legal team and the timeline a little bit about the, what went on with the agreement, if you could. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner Pepcorn. So we began discussions about three weeks, three, four weeks ago. Really, it started from Commissioner Strand, as you mentioned, with the idea that we could sit down and figure out consensus based off of the plethora of issues out there related to upstream impacts. And so we, we got down to the nitty gritty, I guess you can say, and we started talking about each one of those. Couple of the big items were protection for crop insurance related to potential damages if we were to operate the project while there were, during the growing season. Another concern that was taken care of was the prevent plant program. So if we were to operate the project and the egg producers were not able to plant their crop, we would compensate them under, under that event. Another big item for them was business interruption insurance. So there's a number of co-ops that provide inputs to the agricultural community in the upstream mitigation area. If we were to operate the project and no crops were planted, those inputs would not be utilized and the revenues would not be realized by those co-ops. So we'll be providing an insurance program in, in case that event were to occur to cover those losses. Another big item was farmstead relocation. And that was an item that the diversion authority board had already agreed to, as you know. And that would provide a forgivable loan for producers in the upstream mitigation area that were relocating outside of the, outside of that area so that they could reestablish their agricultural production facilities and, and be able to stay in business, basically. We also agreed to an economic relief fund for the Richland-Wilken JPA. And so we'll be funding that and the intent of those dollars is to go into socioeconomic programs for Wilken and Richland County. And they'll be administering those funds at the local level. And so what, the, the primary intent is to mitigate or compensate for the creation of this development zone that, that wouldn't, where development would not be allowable. And so they can use those funds to drive those into programs, to push growth into areas that it would be allowable.
Can I just ask one more follow-up question? Can you just talk about the P-three and obviously it's next fall, but the importance of, it will give us a lot of certainty as far as the costs for the, for the whole project? If you could talk about that, thank you.
Absolutely, Commissioner Pepcorn. So the public-private partnership is a ability for us to lock in a price for the construction of the channel, the eighteen bridges and the two aqueducts as components of the project. So that will provide a certainty in cost. And this is a little bit different than a design bid build type of a contracting arrangement where we don't have to worry about change orders. Basically, the risk is transferred over to the contractor and the developer and they're also under the responsibility to operate, maintain the channel, aqueducts and bridges for a thirty-year period. So again, we're transferring that risk of operational costs over that time period onto the developer. So it's, it's a unique arrangement, but it provides a certainty both in schedule and in cost controls. The only place I could see cost escalations would be on the Corps of Engineers projects because those are typical design bid build projects as we move along. But I'm happy to report that the Corps is running under budget on the current two projects that they're constructing at the inlet in the Wild Rice. And so as of today, we don't have any concern that the Corps can deliver their components within budget and on schedule.
Any other questions? Mr. Strand, nothing?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I don't have any questions. I'd like to thank and commend you, Joel and John Shockley and Nathan Bursef for your absolutely instrumental roles in getting to the table, keeping us at the table, keeping us focused as we aimed for an end game. And, and I just can't thank you enough on behalf of the community. We now have protection coming our way for certain. And that has not been the case before. I think, I think that's the most important part of this is climate protection from, from erratic weather events. And, and we can only hope that we can get it done in time, but because of your efforts and the efforts upstream and everybody getting to the table and working together and resolving it and agreeing to. So thank you for that. We got climate protection coming our way and we've also shown the world we can put the fight behind us. Everywhere we look, everybody's fighting. They're all duking it out and going at each other. And I'm very proud of our community in our region that we set the bar high and we, we did it ourselves. We showed the public how we can do this and your leadership was absolutely instrumental. So thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Commissioner Strand. I appreciate those kind words. Even though this was a monumental achievement for the diversion authority and the communities involved, the hard work now is putting the project in place. And so we got the eye on, on the prize and we intend to move full speed ahead in, in construction and implementation.
And for the public to understand this, this messes all the different lawsuits, multiple lawsuits the diversion authority had against them, which really allows us to proceed in a faster action. And to concern about jobs, it provides multiple jobs in our community. I think it's a thousand, a thousand five hundred jobs when they're full bore. And it's many contractors in our community as well. So this is a major economic thing that'll be going on in our community. So the ability to have time certain what's going to happen really helps the projects a lot. So thank you, Joel, and all the team that worked hard on this because they did a tremendous job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just correct you. Studies have shown about seventy-seven hundred jobs would be necessary for the, for the implementation of this project, so.
I don't mind, I don't mind that correction. We'll go into public hearings. Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you.
Yes. Item fifty-eight, petition filed for exclusion of property located at fifty-two eighteen sixty-eighth Street South and part of government lot four and section five township one thirty-eight North, range forty-nine West and fifth principal Meridian. Casco in North Dakota continued from a ten nineteen regular meeting. This is going to be agreement for future annexation and first reading exclusion ordinance. Donald Kress to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress of the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. Your packets for these items include ordinances prepared by the city attorney's office. Commissioners, item fifty-eight is what you might call something completely different than we normally bring forward to you. It's an exclusion. What's an exclusion? An exclusion means changing the city limits boundary so the land involved in the exclusion is no longer in the city of Fargo. It's the reverse process of annexation. This is probably the only one of these you'll ever do. So the subject property here, as the mayor has indicated, is this multi-sided piece here, roughly triangular. Here's Fifty-second Avenue and Sixty-third Street. Right off the page here is the Cheyenne River. This is the gray land subdivision. These properties here, this is outside the city limits. The blue line is, this is outside the city limits. This is inside. And so we're going to take this property and move it so it's, move the city limits so it's outside of the city. This is based on an agreement with the property owner on both sides of the, this ditch here, Mr. Howard Gensler, who's also with us tonight, that was worked out largely through the water department and Mr. Gensler's cooperation with rerouting some of the water supply here. We'll go through real quickly. Here's a simpler line drawing. Here's Gensler's property. This ditch, which has been here for a long time, part of the Red River Water Supply Project, but it's gotten filled in here and has been replaced by a pipe that wraps around like this and empties into a detention basin so that Mr. Gensler's property now can be a contiguous piece and not have these odd angles in it. Here's a couple of on-the-ground photos that'll show that. There's the filled-in ditch. This is where that straight pipe is going to be. And this is the detention basin that's below it. So just to go back, there's the ditch. There's where we took the pipe picture and this is the detention basin. The subject is, property has been platted here, just like we do a plat for an annexation, we do a plat for an exclusion. This shows the exclusion area. As Mayor noted, also included in your packet is an agreement for future annexation. It's now going to be outside of the city limits. There will be some triggers that will bring it back into the city limits in, in certain situations. The planning commission, or the staff's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. Mr. Gensler is here and also Troy Hall, the director of our water department, who was instrumental in these negotiations. If you need some additional background information on that. Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes staff's presentation.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to City Commission regarding this petition for exclusion? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? That will cause public hearing. Donald, does this take any special vote or is this majority?
Sir, I believe, I believe it would be, you know, I'm going to defer to the city attorney and that's what I'm going to do.
Eric, is this any supermajority or just a simple majority?
I think a simple majority will do it.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I have a question.
Mr. Garrett.
So it's not like going to West Fargo?
No, sir. It'll just be in our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay.
So it doesn't become a part of any other city. Just move the line over.
To make its own city? Okay. What are the conditions where it would come back to us?
They are stated in the, in the document there. Again, I'll refer you to the city attorney, sir.
I mean, I don't need the whole run, just an idea of what it would look like.
I, I'd have to go on memory without pulling up the packet, but it, it, it comes into the city when there's a need for future development and that's really what it is. The Gensler, Howard and Barbara, this is their farmstead and so this is just appended on to their normal farmstead. At some point, sometime down the road, it will be subject to develop redevelopment when that makes sense.
Is West Fargo in a position to grab it? Since it's going to be in the ET, it's kind of a grab, isn't it?
Yeah. No, I don't, I don't think it's eligible for West Fargo to, to take it in.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item B, touchdown addition, one twelve oh one Thirty-Fifth Avenue South and twelve twelve Harwood Drive. Approval recommended by planning commission on seven eight twenty. So zoning change from agricultural, multi-dwelling residential with a planned unit development to an MR-three with a PUD. First reading the rezoning ordinance, planned unit development, master land use plan and plat of the touch mark addition. Donald Kress to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, as the mayor has stated, this is the touch mark addition. You're probably familiar with this large continuing care senior citizen facility here on University Drive, Thirty-Fifth Avenue South and Harwood Drive. Quartz Plus is right over here. For you old timers, it used to be Cinema Seventy. A minor plat and zone change. The, the project here is to expansion of the existing senior continuing care facility and there's an old PUD on it back from the early nineties that they're trying to bring into compliance with our current regulations. So again, here's the aerial. The aerial says it best, but here are some project site photos. This is University Drive and Thirty-Fifth Avenue South. So you see there is some open area here that the project, the new building will expand Here's the zoning. This explains the zoning. This MR-three, this orangish color here is what most of the project site is zoned. The Touchmark Corporation has bought this piece here, which was a single-family residence. They bought that. That property is still zoned ag. So that's the ag part that'll get rezoned to MR-three and then the, the new planned unit development will be laid over that. The commission's looked at these PUDs before. Here is the plat of the property and just shows the outline here. And here, more interestingly perhaps, is the master land use plan. This shows how some existing parts of the building are going to be demolished and then also these new, a new addition to this building and some relocation of the parking here. I didn't put all the plans on here, but we just stuck with the master land use plan. This is the actual part that you're approving of the PUD and the layout here. So it's a long-term project to, again, increase the, the flexibility here. As the, the PUD chart is in your staff report there, it lists the proposed modifications of the MR-three and other zones. There is a parking reduction included in that. As you know, many of these senior citizens here and people in memory care have probably fewer cars and doulots driving than you would in a regular apartment building. And there are also some adjustments in there related to the site development standards. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. Commissioner, just ask one thing. If you would move to approve this, please use the one on the screen. It's just a little more detailed than the one in your staff report. And I believe Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering is available on virtually.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to City Commission regarding the rezoning? Anybody wishing to speak? If not.
Only if there's questions, Commissioners.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Brian Patengale from Houston Engineering. As Donald explained, this is a development for the expansion of independent care and memory care on their existing site facility. Pretty straightforward as Donald explained. Like I said, they bought the adjacent small residential lot and were combining it with the existing lot and sort of cleaning everything up to allow us to continue with this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have or any information needed.
Any questions from Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Great addition. It looks real good. Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Transfer of class FA alcoholic license from Bistro's and Moore, doing business as Old Chicago, to seven oh one Oops, seven oh one Eatery's Prairie Kitchen and Camp Loon Tree at seven oh one University Drive North. Grant Larson to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. On behalf of the Liquor Control Board, I'm here to report there's no significant findings. And the Liquor Control Board has moved to approve the transfer of this class FA alcoholic beverage license from Bistro's and Moore, doing business as Old Chicago, to seven oh one OPS Incorporated, doing business as Eatery's and Prairie Kitchen and Camp Loon Tree located at seven oh one University Drive North. Recommended motion is to approve the issuance of the FA alcoholic beverage license to seven one OPS Incorporated.
What are they going to do with that grant, you know?
They've transferred it and I believe this is Kitty Corner from Fargo Brewing and so that's going to be another establishment with food and alcohol.
In the space of the Old Chicago or a different place?
Nope, sorry. Seven oh one.
Oh, north.
University Drive where that former cleaners, dry cleaners, they're doing some extensive remodeling. I haven't been in the facility, but they're doing some extensive remodeling to make that in a, into refurbished new dining facility.
Very good. Any, excuse me, is there anybody in the public who wants to speak about this transfer? Anybody in public wants to speak? If not, pause public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion and I'll also, I've also been along here a long time, unfortunately, but it's Rosie's laundromat was the, was the building, what it used to be. And they've totally remodeled it and it looks great, so. But it's, that's right on the corner. Thank you.
I'll second and I actually used that one in college, so.
And is it going to be open soon?
It doesn't look like it. It's been a while, I think, but they're doing a lot of work there for sure.
Have they done piles of work?
I have a point to make real quick.
Mr. Garrett.
So the FA licenses aren't transferable anymore, as for the people who haven't been here this whole time. The reason this one's able to be transferred is because back in, what was it, twenty seventeen or whatever year it was, you were able to transfer them. Now, because they're not limited, you, you have to buy it from the city. So normally, if a, if a business goes out of business, they would return the FA license back to the city of Fargo and then they're just, they would go through the process and buy it from the city of Fargo again. This one's being transferred because this, this, this was grandfathered in. So after this, this license will no longer be able to be transferred the way it is right now. So you won't see a lot of these going forward, but some people might be curious why we're able to transfer this FA license and that's the reason why.
So when the future for business closes down, you will buy the license from them?
We will take it back. We will not buy it back because it's a renewable every year, right? So you pay the upfront cost and then you renew it every year. This makes it cleaner and I, I wish we do this with all of our licenses, but that's another discussion for a different day.
And how much is an FA license?
A hundred thousand, isn't it? I wish Steve was here, something like that. It's expensive.
Yeah. I believe that's right.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item fifty-one, interim financing agreement, series A, series B with Fargo's portion of local cost share associated Red River Valley Water Supply. Bruce Grubb to explain. Mary Meridian is here as well from the Red River Valley Water Supply. She does a great job and she's keep moving this along. We're going to have drought protection.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. And, and Mary, I'll introduce you in just a moment, but as the mayor mentioned, this item is related to the Red River Valley Water Supply project that you might be familiar with, but it's essentially a project to bring Missouri River water to central and eastern North Dakota. And in terms of climate resiliency that Commissioner Strand mentioned a little bit earlier, this project in effect drought proofs our area. So it definitely increases our resiliency against drought conditions. But specifically tonight, in front of you, I have two separate agreements called interim financing agreements, series A and series B. The reason that they're separate agreements is because they are subject to different cost shares. This is a state and local funded project. So the series A agreement involves state funding that was originally approved in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen biennial budget and that was approved at a ninety percent state, ten percent local cost share. The series B agreement involves state funding that was approved in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one biennial budget and that is subject to a different cost share, seventy-five percent state, twenty-five percent local. That being said, though, both of the agreements are related to the early construction of critical components of the project, including an intake at the Missouri River, a discharge at the Cheyenne River and sections of the transmission pipeline in between. And it's important to get an early start on these critical components because the project has obtained all the federal and state permits that are required and it's important to get the project started before those permits expire. So both of the interim financing agreements involve four parties as shown on the screen here. The Garrison Diversion Conservancy District representing the state of North Dakota, the Lake Agassy Water Authority, which is the local sponsor and represents the project water users, the city of Grand Forks, or the city of Fargo, that's a member of Lawa, obviously, and the city of Grand Forks, also a member of Lawa. And so on behalf of the Lake Agassy Water Authority, Fargo and Grand Forks would be agreeing to cover the local cost share requirements for the early construction activities contained in both of these agreements to be ultimately reimbursed by other water users as they allocate for water from the project. Incidentally, the city of Fargo, which includes West Fargo and the Casserole Waters District, when coupled with the city of Grand Forks, makes up about eighty percent of the water from this project. On this slide, the dark blue balloons show the regional water partners, including West Fargo, Casserole Water and Industry. The light blue balloons show the regional wastewater partners, including Harwood Horace and Oxbow. And, uh, we need to update this slide now because we recently added the city of West Fargo as well. This slide is an interesting slide, it helps illustrate the water paradox that we face in the Red River Valley. Um, in the upper left, uh, it was about thirty years ago, but not long ago in climatological terms. But that upper left picture shows the Red River in nineteen eighty-eight with little or no flow, so a condition of not enough water. And in the lower right-hand part of the slide, you can see a picture from our flood of record two thousand nine, a condition of too much water. So, uh, it really helps show the issues that we face here in the Red River Valley, both very important. Just talked about flood protection, now we're talking about drought protection. This is a very interesting graphic for a nerd engineer like myself, but this shows two years of history, two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. And you can see through most of two thousand eleven, the river flow was well above normal. And then the very next year, in two thousand twelve, a dramatic change in flow, at one point falling well below normal. So this slide really does a good job of demonstrating how quickly water supplies in the Red River Valley can change. How likely is a drought to occur? This slide kind of shows that. It's a hundred and ten-year period, starting in nineteen oh one and extending to, uh, through two thousand eleven. And this is a graphic of measured low flows on the Red River. The way to read this graphic is the, uh, black bars represent the seven-day measured annual low flows on the river. And then the horizontal red line is Fargo's average daily water use currently at fourteen million gallons per day. The horizontal green line is Fargo's peak daily water use of thirty million gallons per day. And the horizontal blue line is the water treatment plant's production capacity of forty-five million gallons per day. And so you can see that over time, it wasn't just the extended drought period of the thirties that caused problems. You can see it also occurred in the sixties, seventies, eighties, and nineties. Fargo has a surface water treatment plant and because of that, obviously, we rely on surface water sources. We have permitted appropriations, uh, appropriation for water, uh, from the Red River, a rather large appropriation. We have a smaller appropriation on the Cheyenne River. And we also have an appropriation for water that's stored in Lake Ashtrula behind Bald Hill Dam. And having some redundancy in your water supply sources is a good idea because it allows you to switch water sources if you need to, in the event of contamination or low flows or poor water quality. But the problem is, um, in a nineteen thirties type of drought modeling is shown that the Missouri River is the only reliable surface water supply in the state of North Dakota. In fact, uh, if you look at all the surface water supplies in North Dakota, the Missouri River makes up ninety-five percent. Uh, I love this graphic because I think we're being good stewards of our water resources. Uh, this slide shows the average daily water use per person over a thirty-year period from nineteen eighty to two thousand ten. And you can see the trend over that time has been a somewhat steady decline from about a hundred and fifty gallons per person per day in the eighties to about a hundred and twenty gallons per person per day in the two thousand. That trend has continued, so over the past ten years, it's continued to go down. And now we've just finally dipped under a hundred gallons per person per day. Incidentally, what's interesting about that, the national average is about a hundred and eighty gallons per person per day. So we're also working to increase our climate resiliency through conservation as well. And for conservation purposes, we try to categorize our water demand into essential use and non-essential use. Uh, non-essential use is primary outdoor water use and because of that tends to be rather seasonal in nature. So our drought management plan first tries to restrict non-essential uses, but if conditions warrant, uh, we have to get into the essential use component. Unfortunately, in my career, we haven't had to do that, uh, yet anyway. So for drought resiliency, the Missouri River is the answer, we believe. There's been a lot of work done on the economic impacts of a sustained drought. And estimates are a twenty-seven billion dollar negative impact for a drought that would last ten years. So here are our solutions, our short, short-term solution to water supply shortages is our drought management plan. The original version of this plan was adopted in two thousand three, uh, since updated in two thousand fifteen. And so the current plan contains specific measures or actions that we would take in the event of an insufficient water supply or some sort of infrastructure limitations on our water system. Long-term solution to the right, of course, is the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. Uh, very quickly, our drought management plan has four phases of drought severity. Phase one being normal conditions or no drought indicators. Phase two is a drought advisory, which would occur when we're seeing below normal precipitation and declining, uh, river flows. Phase three is a drought warning, which would occur if precipitation and river flows continue to decline to the point that if that continues, a water supply shortages would be likely. And then phase four is a drought emergency, which would be declared when we can no longer meet even the highest priority water needs, uh, in our region. Or if our infrastructure was eliminated, limited to the point that we couldn't meet the highest priority needs. And so an obvious question is, how do you measure the presence or the severity of drought? And our drought management plan has four indicators that are constantly monitored. Uh, they include the Palmer Drought Severity Index, the Standard Precipitation Index, stream flows on the Red and Cheyenne Rivers, and reservoir levels in Lake Ashtrula on the Cheyenne River and Lake Travers in Orwell on the Red River. And then, as I just mentioned, in two thousand fifteen, we added infrastructure limitations to be able to go to, uh, water restrictions if need be for, uh, causes of infrastructure limitations. And, uh, Commissioner Garrick and I, we participate in utility committee meetings once a month and we get a monthly drought update at each of those meetings. So the drought management plan is our short-term plan, our long-term plan is the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And so this is just a simplistic, high-level overview of the plan with an intake on the Missouri River, uh, a water transmission pipeline, and a discharge on the Cheyenne River, uh, just above Lake Ashtrula, actually quite simple. As I mentioned earlier, we have two separate agreements in front of you called interim financing agreements, series A and B. Again, the reason they're separate agreements is because they're subject to, uh, different cost shares. But again, that being said, both agreements are related to early construction activities, uh, associated with the project. And so those three components include a Missouri River intake wet well, certain sections of the transmission pipeline, and a discharge structure on the Cheyenne River. And so work contained in the series A agreement totals fourteen million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, of which Fargo's share of the total being one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Uh, work contained in the series B agreement totals seven million, five hundred thousand dollars, with Fargo's share being one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Fargo's share of the costs that you just saw have been, uh, budgeted in the water utility budget over three annual budget cycles. We budgeted eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty nineteen, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty, and budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one, so that we have the local funding needed for, uh, this early out construction to proceed. And so, uh, with that, the, uh, staff recommendation is on the screen to approve the interim financing agreements, series A and series B, associated with early construction activities on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And as the mayor, uh, alluded to earlier, uh, I would like to recognize Mary Meridian, who's with us tonight. Mary, if you'd like to wave. Mary is with the Garrison Divergent Conservancy District and is the deputy program manager for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And so Mary, I want to thank you for being here and she has agreed to help any questions, answer any questions you might have related to the permits or the, uh, early out construction activities. And so thank you for that, Mary, and I'll turn it back to you, mayor.
First of all, excellent, uh, report. I don't think we, as a commission, have talked about this for a long time. Uh, Dave has been involved with it, Pepcorn, as well, to help me with the Red River Valley Water Supply. But I think it's good that the city knows what we're doing, the money was budgeted in our utility committee. We had this all arranged to do that. And we're actually doing the major lift of this project. City of Fargo, if we did not get involved and bring Grand Forks along, there are smaller users more than likely do not have the money in their funding right now. So this is a huge move for us because we're going out for bed and we will have groundbreaking sometime in the spring in which this project is moving forward. We are at the same time working with the state government to see long-term bonding or other different items. As we know, we're trying to build the diversion authority in six years. The, uh, water supply is really over ten years, but if we could bring that down, it brings our costs down. So if there is a, uh, uh, bonding going on in the state this year, if that does happen, then this project may move faster depending on what the state legislative team decides. So just bear that in mind, we may bring a different iteration to this in the spring or during legislative time. But Bruce, excellent job, I think it outlines everything where we're headed and it's a good overview. Any questions? Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion, but also the question, you, you talked about the, the potential of us being reimbursed. Is that for some of this money that we're talking about right now or is that later?
That is for part of some of this money as well. And the reason that Fargo and Grand Forks are taking a leadership position here is because we account for about eighty percent of the water. And so we wanted to get started with most of the ratepayers, uh, having the ability to go now and some of the smaller water systems, uh, as they commit and allocate for water through their boards, we would be reimbursed.
Can I just add one more thing? So the great thing about this is there's lots of small towns with, with small water systems that will benefit from this. And a lot of them, like you said, can't afford right now. However, this is economic development for them in the future. Uh, if they're a part of this, then they have, uh, there, there might be a business that'll want to relocate to a small town. And if they didn't have this, they would not have that option. So I, this is a great thing, even though obviously we, the city of Fargo benefits a lot. A lot of the small rural wa- water systems are gonna be, it's gonna be a great thing for them down the road.
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Preston?
It's really exciting to see, see this. Um, I was involved in some of the initial conversations way back in the nineties, so, uh, it's wonderful to see this happening. What's the timeframe for actual completion?
Well, the mayor, uh, mentioned a six-year build on the, uh, uh, diversion project. We have several different scenarios and it, it's based a little bit on funding availability. So from Fargo's position, we've got two really large projects, flood protection and water supply. And so, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've got a, a six-year plan as well, which is kind of an aggressive schedule. And then we've got a ten-year plan as well, that would slow it down based on funding availability. But, but we really want to see ourselves drought-proofed in the worst way.
Mr. Garrick?
Yeah, I'm like Bruce, I like, really like this stuff. Um, it's an important project, we're getting a lot of bang for the buck. And being that we are the regional, uh, supplier to all these other communities, it's, it's even more important for us to do that because we have contracts we need to fulfill and things like that. And if there is a drought, we're obligated to feel that pain with the other communities that we sell water to. So that, that agreement that we have is for all of us in the region. So this is, this is a great value for us to, to invest now. And it's, and it's even more important for us being that regional provider, so I hope we all, we all agree.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, mayor. Um, who would have ever thought that in one meeting, we'd be talking about both ends of the spectrum of climate needs? You know, we have drought being addressed and we have flooding being addressed. And those are absolute, both historic, uh, uh, to have them at one time. A question I have, I'm old enough to remember the Garrison Divergent, when it was gonna go through the Mcluskey Canal, Mcluskey Canal over to the Cheyenne River. But it was originally, and that was killed, but we were, there was an irrigation element. Is that part of this now? Or is this completely just a water supply topic?
This is an emergency water supply for drought proofing purposes, so there is not an irrigate, oh, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not an irrigation component here unless an irrigator would nominate, uh, to purchase water off the system. I don't believe at this point in history they have. But as you probably recall, the original Garrison Divergent Project was a, a federal project, ran out of money and so it didn't go any further than Mcluskey. And this Red River Valley Water Supply Project started out as a federal project as well, but could not get a record of decision through, uh, nationally. And so the state of North Dakota and the local water users in eastern and central North Dakota decided to take this on, uh, themselves, and that's what makes me really proud.
So out of the Mcluskey Canal, they still have irrigation, which they can only, uh, uh, ask for so much. And it's very limited, Commissioner Strand, from originally started, it was a huge amount and it's getting whittled down, whittled down, whittled down. But so far, the Mcluskey Canal, and we do have that as an alternative. We're trying to draw some money from our Mcluskey Canal, but it's only twenty-four cubic feet per second right now, is that right? Yeah. Yep. Mr. Strand?
Just lastly, what happened to the federal commitment to fund this back when they delivered and created the Garrison Dam? That was their understa- I, I thought that was decades ago, the feds were gonna fund this. Is there federal funding in this?
There is no federal funding in this.
And, and is that because we've completely gone on our own or it's because there's no funding from them, we have no choice?
It's because we couldn't get funding approval to proceed through the federal government and things laid dormant for a number of years, at which point, uh, we went to the state of North Dakota and said, we'd like to build a state and local solution.
It's really significant.
Thank you. And I just want you to think about this sometime, when California had its drought, city of Oakland, the usage of water was down to twenty-five gallons per day per person. And when you're doing your hundred and eight or your ninety, just try to think about that, how quick you'd have to take your shower, how quick you'd have to do anything. And so I don't want to get to that, but it is amazing that as a city, we're working our way down to ninety, that's fantastic. When one eighty is what the rest of the country is using, so people are doing a great job. Commissioner Preston?
Just one more short question. On the diminishing, uh, use per capita, any idea what's causing that?
Well, we, we, some people would say price, as the price of water goes up, usage goes down. But I, I do think that, uh, a big element of that is people being conservation conscious, I really do. I mean, if you look at plumbing fixtures, uh, shower, if you ever replaced a showerhead, a lot of fixtures are going to lower use, uh, and so I do think conservation plays a big part of that.
So, Mr. Chair, you, you have a whole list of things, but one of the other ones, odd even watering, it used to be unlimited watering. And now that's just one thing that automatically goes into effect, so a lot of people take that for granted. But that isn't how it used to be, it used to be people would water all day, every day. And so just things like that, I think it's a great thing and, uh, obviously to use, use things wisely, that's a good thing.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we just give, uh, Bruce a round of applause, he rarely present. See, you can say standing ovation when you present, Bruce, good job. Item fifty-three, applications for property tax exemptions, can I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fifty-two, just make sure we go back to fifty-two, right?
Yeah.
After, after this vote, just make sure we don't miss it.
Uh, roll call vote?
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand? Gary?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Now I'll do a roll call vote on the Red River?
Nope, we, we just skipped over fifty-two, was all right.
Yeah, fifty-two?
Yep.
Items?
We're okay with that.
No, we skipped it.
We skipped it, okay. Yes, you're right, I'm sorry. Request by the mayor for, uh, COVID-related request temporary moratorium by ordinance of occupying emergency shelters and non-resident structures. Chief Dirksen to explain. I think Steve's on. Did we lose him?
Oops.
He was on.
He just left.
Eric, you want to explain, you're starting to explain, please?
Uh, I'll do my best. So this is, uh, you know, another item related to the COVID emergency. As explained to me, the, oh, here, this might be Chief Dirksen coming in. Uh, but it even, you know, the shelters in the community, uh, are trying to space, uh, the people that are using the shelters. And so they're short of facilities. Apparently their arrangements made for, uh, some buildings that are available, uh, but those buildings aren't designed and aren't permitted for residential occupancy, uh, for the residential code, both under the building code, but is, uh, uh, also the fire code. Um, and so between, uh, the building official, Bruce Terrillson, and Chief Dirksen, and Ryan Erickson, the fire marshal, took a look at what the conditions might be that could be put into place in lieu of the normal requirements for, uh, safety for residential occupancy. Uh, and, uh, so that, this moratorium, if you review the ordinance, you can see a list of conditions, uh, that are in place uh, that would be, uh, checked off on by the, uh, fire chief as well as the building official, Mr. Terrillson. Um, the facilities must meet minimum egress and safety guidelines, need to have a fire watch, uh, in place, uh, awaken alert at all times, uh, telephonic communication available. in place, awake and alert at all times, telephonic communication available, and no smoking and so forth, evacuation map being posted. Those are some of the conditions that would be required in order to open up what otherwise would be not a residential building to be used for an emergency homeless shelter. And so, this moratorium basically temporarily halts the enforcement of the requirement of those normal residential requirements.
Questions?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving in second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yep. Now, I'm right. Item 54, COVID-19 update. I think I saw Desi Fleming on. I hope she can come back to us. Yeah, you're on.
Great, thanks, Mayor and Commissioner, Commissioners. So, our COVID cases in the state, as well as Cass County, continue to increase weekly. As of today's results, Cass County had 1,371 active cases, our highest yet. To give some perspective on the increase in cases, we averaged around 146 cases per day in October, almost triple our average during September. As cases increase, so has the positivity rate. Cass County's positivity rate is slightly above the state at this point. We've seen a steady climb since early fall. Community spread is our leading category for transmission, with the highest case numbers in that 20 to 39-year-old age range. There have been four deaths in Cass County over the past week, with two of those being in long-term care residence. We are again seeing a spillover into this population, which is concerning, given their high vulnerability. North Dakota experienced a somber record high for deaths last month, with 265 North Dakotans passing away in October alone, raising the total of deaths to 540 individuals throughout this pandemic. Eighty-seven of those deaths were residents of Cass County. As we hear from the Weekly Physicians Advocacy Committee, hospitalizations continue to be high, as well within many facilities across the state, that are pulling staff, closing down clinics to staff critical infrastructure, and diverting any further admissions. Locally, health systems are very busy, but maintaining, with staffing being their biggest limitation, and that trend is being felt nationwide as well. Cass continues to receive roughly 20% of the state's testing allotment, testing on average 12,000 individuals weekly with our targeted testing. Long-term care testing of staff and residents continues to be a priority within the state. Long-term care testing is required by the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid Services, and due to our positivity rate, and Cass County testing is currently weekly for their requirement. As mentioned earlier, active cases and positivity rate are at their highest numbers since the beginning of this pandemic. Using the North Dakota Department of Health Risk Assessment, active cases actually meet the critical red category levels currently, and positivity rate is at the upper limits of the high-risk orange category. The governor has maintained us in the high-risk orange category based on those two numbers, along with our testing numbers. The trends we continue to see are very concerning, especially with the colder weather, flu seasons, and holidays quickly approaching. So, as a reminder, keep up with the prevention measures of masking, physical distancing, avoiding crowds, staying home when you're sick, and using good hand washing. And if you haven't already, please get your flu shot. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Commissioner Garrick.
I don't have any questions. I just want to throw some more stats here. As of reporting today, November 2nd, 2020, there have been 7,229 negative tests today. Let's see, daily recovery rate today was 631 people recovered, and in the state right now, the state is 760,000 people, 751,637 people don't have COVID, so more positive.
Any other commissioners, questions?
I think some people, Superintendent talked today, concerned about keeping the schools open. Rupakande talked about the fact the community, since its community acquired, that they're catching it with the small social groups. So, to work a bit more on that in the community, because we're seeing numbers continue to climb. So, I think we have to seriously look at that as a community.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, you know, and I want to again commend you and your leadership for initiating and implementing a mask criteria mandate, however you, whatever you want to call it, that has had, I think, a positive incremental impact. And across the state, many cities have replicated that. So, we've shown some leadership. But Mayor, you've also told the public that we may need to be prepared for the next steps going into the next level of critical risk. What would that look like, and how would we get there if we need to? And is there any way that you see, or Desi sees, that we can avoid that?
I'll refer to Eric Johnson. We just had some questions today. What are the steps we can take if people are non-compliant, I think you're talking about, and non-compliant in a variety of different ways? Number of people in a restaurant or bar, mask usage in the bar, what goes on in the bar? And Eric's kind of researching, do you go through liquor control, or do you go through different ways to manage that? Or do we wait till the governor to go to a phase red? So, in the spring, that happened, and that was the governor-led mandate at that time. Eric Johnson?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, you know, particularly in states of emergency, they've been declared by the mayor and city commission, the law, both in the city and the state, provides an awful lot of authority for managing problems like this, so there is quite a bit of authority to, to make certain demands. I think the issue is just trying to figure out what the sweet spot is for, you know, what the, what the hierarchy is going to be. As you say, it may be need, something may be needed sooner than later, and, you know, what do you impose on the various institutions and organizations that are creating gatherings of people that you're trying to, to avoid? To what extent do you limit that? Shut down certain types of events, whether it be concerts, dances, things like that? And then, what, how do you figure out when, when to release that again? Seems like that would be based a lot upon whether you're in the orange category, or yellow category, or hopefully get back to green at some point. And so, that, we are working on trying to figure out what that strategy is going to be. But there is clearly authority in the law for a city to create those kind of requirements, either through the local health, the board, the health board itself, the health officer, and, but also, city commission can be involved as well.
Commissioner Garrick.
Yeah, you brought up schools, and it kind of jogged me a little bit. You know, we're not the school board, but I'm a parent of a school-aged child. So, the real effect of having kids go to school part-time or not go to school at all is you, you endanger them more. You put them in a situation where they're being exposed to more people than they otherwise would. On a regular week, my kid would go to school, you know, two and a half times a week, he would go to his classroom, and then, on the other, on the back half of the week, he would go to the YMCA. And he gets exposed to different kids there, different adults there, and different people walking through there. So, people want to do good things, like, hey, let's, let's protect children. But then, what you're doing is actually endangering them by exposing them to more people. So, let's have a real conversation about closing things, telling schools, it's already affecting the kids, it's already, you know, it's not only them physically, but their mental health is suffering for this, their, their education is suffering for this, and there is no, there's no substitution for going to, going to school. So, I hope that we have a community conversation before we're talking about shutting schools down further, and I would like to talk about opening them up further, because it would keep my kids safer.
Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, I think the research is really showing that schools aren't hotspots necessarily, so I think everybody's concluding that. Just wanted to follow up on your comments, Eric. I think, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll come back with some more clear indication as to what's possible, and have another conversation probably about what we want to do, if anything, so.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You know, I'd like to plant a seed in our thinking going forward. We have our COVID task force, which I'm gathering is mostly health-related policies. I would suggest that we maybe consider creating a small business task force. The businesses that I know are in absolute dire trouble. And Commissioner Pepcorn and Commissioner Garrick, you've all along warned us of this consequence of the harsh actions of shutdowns and lockdowns. We don't have a lockdown now, but we may be aiming that way. I don't know that many of these businesses, or some of them, will make it that far. And, and, and I know there's an emergency resiliency grant, second round two coming from the state, but we're two weeks, almost a week plus, before that even opens. It takes months to unfold, and, and businesses right now, it's just really, so if, if we could, if I could plant that in your thinking, that we explore the notion, and I'm not sure who or how or who, what we do, but we bring people around the table to discuss the climate, the state of our small businesses, and maybe some of our bigger businesses. You know, if they're impacted, I'm certain they are. But what can we do? How can we approach it? Maybe there's some creative approaches. I know we have community development funds out there that are extraordinary. Maybe there's some ways we can connect these dots to each other, because I'm, we all, I'm sure, we're all absolutely critically concerned about our, our, our business community, our hospitality, food, culture, entertainment industry. They're just struggling.
To that point, John, some of the restaurants have reached out and said if we close down again, they won't come back. So, it's very disconcerting, seeing Professor Pepcorn talked about that one time. We all have received Facebook and Twitters to us about certain bars, restaurants that were a little bit over the top this weekend on Halloween, and I have talked to the owners of both those establishments, and have talked to them about this, and just reminded them of where we're trying to head and what we're supposed to be doing here. Good point. Maybe we'll talk to the chamber, talk to some people what we can do, because as many of us in this commission feel, we don't want to have the business not come back. We, we'd like them to be able to survive this pandemic, but we have to figure out how to get through it as well. So, I think that's a good discussion point. Any other questions? Does Desi?
Desi's turning off the lights, so we better let her go.
I'm sorry, I don't like my automatic lights.
Yeah, any other discussion? I think that's last of the business.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Follows the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Almost finished by six. Good job, guys, ladies.